...of the off-leash dog park, 5:30 June 22nd in the caucus room in City Hall. The committee consists of Councilman Jack Knapp and Councilman Peter Nero and myself, Mary Ty Schultz as the chair. We have our petitioner with us, Councilman Joe Cavo. We have Robin Edward from Corporation Council, Director of Public Works Antonio Ayadrola, Director of Parks and Rec Nick Kaplantis, Director of Planning Dennis Elburne, and Assistant Finance Director Dan Garrick, and members of the public. So, I guess we'll begin by asking the petitioner what he has to offer today. It's a continuation of another meeting on March 8th.
(inaudible)
Oh, excuse me. Peter?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to make an amendment to the minutes. In here it is stated in the, I'm gonna call it the first big paragraph, Mr. Nero stated that he would support a dog park and thought they should move forward with finding space. While I may be jumping up and down and saying, "Yeah, let's do that tonight," my recollection was at that meeting, after Councilman, after Mr. Cavo made his presentation, it was so great, I just said, "We should move forward with investigating the possibility of having a dog park," or something to those words. While, I don't remember the exact words, the implication, what I was saying had to do with, "Let's move forward and see if, to see if this is feasible," as opposed to saying, "Let's do it." So, that was the only clarification I would like to make. That's okay.
Councilman Nero, we will definitely, I have, you know, we have spoken to our clerk and she said they will go back, check the minutes, and that correction will be made to the minutes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Now, Councilman Cavo.
Thank you, Councilman Ty Schultz. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I truly appreciate the interest, and I will tell you that since this has started, there's been a very positive influence. People have come up to me multiple times now, whenever I'm in a public setting, and they ask me, "How's the dog park going?" And I said that we're still in the very early planning stages of it, but hopefully it's going well. At the last meeting, as you remember, we had talked about looking at potential sites. Mr. Kaplantis and myself and Mr. Ayadrola have looked at several sites through the city, and one particular site keeps coming back to mind, and I'm gonna let Mr. Ayadrola talk about that more, from an engineering standpoint, and that is the backed lot of Highland Avenue Park. And in discussion with Mr. Kaplantis, the part, that back part of that park really isn't being utilized to its full potential. It has a lot of amenities that are available to it. It has running water, city running water there, and the grade and everything seems to work really well, and it has the ability to have two separate parks, a small dog park and a large dog park, with what I feel is an adequate area in size for both the large dogs and the small dogs. And at this point, I'd like to just turn it over to Mr. Ayadrola. Mr. Ayadrola had a draft, me and him here go out and draft the property, and he has a drawing free line, a drawing he gave me as well, and it has a potential fence line, and I believe Mr. Ayadrola also required some prices for fencing. So, that's pretty much where we're at right now. So, Mr. Ayadrola?
Before you start, I would just like to acknowledge that Councilman Ben Chee Neece is here ex officio. I'm sorry.
No problem. First of all, I just want to excuse my attire. I was off today, but I came in for this very important meeting.
Thank you, Antonio. You're the best.
I thought I was gonna have some time to change, but that did not work out for me. So, we were fortunate to actually have a very detailed survey of this property, which helped us quickly put a little map together for us to look at. The opportunities available here is that we have running water, and I could, yeah, good. I'm gonna just roll this back up so we're not fighting the phone. The existing park actually has water, so would not be an issue to be able to run a service line out to the entranceway of the park, or I should say, the entranceway to the new fenced area for the park. So, and it actually works very well area-wise to create a large area for the bigger dogs and then a smaller area for the smaller dogs. And with Joe's help, you know, there's actually a little bit of science that goes with these parks and how you lay them out, the transitioning area, the, you know, your entryway and things like that. So, in talking to Joe, we were able to come up with an entranceway, which is, then has a, another gate that lets you into the large dog park and the small dog park. And I guess that's where you put your leash on and things like that.
Right. That's where you take your leash off.
To secure an area. That works out very nice, 'cause it falls in within two very large maple trees, so it actually aesthetically looks really nice. The other nice thing about it is, we do have some parking already available to us, which is nice. And, you know, down the road, if this thing really takes off, there is an opportunity to expand this into the area in the back. So, if we really get a lot of interest, you know, we can do that. The topography couldn't be any better. It's actually very, very gentle topography. This is a very level area. And we came up with, the large area is about 61,000 square feet, which is, let's see, that's just over an acre. Yeah. And then the other one's about 8,000 square feet. So, you know, it's, you know, we took a look at it, you know, there is a small playground area here with kids, so we were very sensitive to make sure that we have plenty of distance between that playground area and the fence. We didn't want any small kids going in there, sticking their hand in the fence. And we may end up putting what they call privacy slots in the actual chain link fence, which would really prevent the kids from, you know, doing something. So, it works. Out of all the areas that we looked at, this one really was the easiest to get up and run it. It had the water. It has the parking. It is somewhat centralized. And, you know, we just thought it was a good fit. And the other nice part about it is, I actually had a map available to us. So, this was a half-hour exercise to be able to pull this together for you guys for tonight's meeting. Having said that, based on the perimeter of fencing requirements, going with a five-foot black vinyl coated, which is nice, it's a nice-looking fence, it just doesn't look like, it's not a silver chain link fence. The price is somewhere around $26,000. There might be another $3,000 or $4,000 associated with that, because there is existing fencing here that's all down and should probably be removed, but that could be a couple thousand dollars here or there. So, I think, geez, Joe, I think that's about it.
If I could just chime in for just a second. One of the things that I spoke about at the first meeting was the transition area, and if you look on the map, there's a grown-up area here on the side. One of the pitfalls that I've seen at dog parks that I've visited is that the transition areas, because of space, aren't large enough to properly transition dogs. Dogs on leashes seem to have problems with other dogs on leashes. And you need an area large enough so that when you walk in with a dog on a leash, you can stay separated from another dog by a fair distance. And Antonio did a great job and made that transition area 15 feet by 30 feet, which is a huge area. In Ridgefield's Park, you know, their transition area is about five feet by five feet, and if somebody's coming out of the park and someone's going into the park and the two dogs meet in that five-square-foot area, there's a battle sometimes that happens in there, and it's just the nature of what dogs do when they're on leashes. And I'm not a vet, I couldn't explain why, but it's just something about them on leashes. So, the transition area is really nice. People will be way far enough away from each other so that when someone comes in with a dog while someone's coming out, they can leash up and take the leash off and transition without having, you know, the dogs even close to each other in proximity. So, that's one of the real benefits of that area. The other thing that Antonio touched on is that if this thing were need, this thing were to need to grow, there's a heavily wooded area back here, it's almost again the same size as this area, like Antonio, that, you know, with, you know, a lot of tree work, could be converted over into, you know, expanding this if the need were to arise and it would happen, that it got that much activity, which I really truly believe this will have a lot of activity when it gets up and running. So, but I think it's a great start. And I'm, actually, this is the first time I've heard of fence pricing, and I'm very happy about that. That's a tremendous, I think it's a tremendous price, so I'm very happy about that. And that's about it. I mean, I think that, you know, we have to figure out what our next step is in this. I think it probably has to go to planning for report. It probably has to go to the Park and Rec Commission for report. I mean, that's why I'm gonna ask Dennis and Robin, you know, their thoughts on that.
I suppose we ought to get a site plan, but it's done. It's no big deal. While we're looking at it, it's fencing. The park is in. I asked that question, why the, why the space for the small dogs is so small?
Does their shoe-
Because they're small dogs. Thank you.
I thought that was a trick question.
Who decides, who decides when this dog is small, you know, who goes where? Is that an owner?
There's a little sign that says your feet is tall.
Is it looking like it's Disney World?
Well, I'm pretty sure you know.
Yeah, the owners, the owners usually, they know. I mean, they're not gonna walk in with the orchard carrier and put it in the big dog park with, you know, a shepherd or a rottweiler or, you know, something like that, so.
Can this be explained?
Or does it have to be spelled out?
Yeah. Yeah, because, yeah.
Like, Robin, do you have something you would like to add?
Um, I, I mean, I know Dennis has a simple site plan. I think just, you know, comments on a site plan, um, you know, I mean, there's no legal requirement that you refer to any particular departments before it goes back to the council. I feel that if you want input from specific people, you certainly can ask for that. I mean, you can certainly ask for that. And then you want, I wanted to have, I don't know if anyone has any questions. Dan very nicely came to us.
Yeah, yeah, well, then trying to get all the department people and then-
Yes, because I know there were some questions last time about the whole liability aspect. And I had said really last time that it's like any other type of activity that the city enters into. Of course, there's risks involved with it. With it, there's risks involved with everything, and, you know, that's why we have insurance. And, you know, anticipating that beforehand, Dan and I had communicated even prior to the first meeting, and he contacted our insurance carrier. And I mean, he can elaborate more on that. It's really, it's like anything, anything the city engages in, there's a risk associated with it. I can tell you, there's no cases in Connecticut on dog parks per se, liabilities for dog parks. I did look into that. We would, as been mentioned in this report, we would amend our ordinances to, yeah, the council decides to go ahead and go forward with this project. We do have Section 123 of our ordinances that would need to be amended, so our office could take care of that as well. I think that's it for now. If anyone has any specific questions.
And if you want to shoot a copy to us for preliminary look, we'd be happy to.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
If you want to shoot a copy to us for preliminary look, we'd be more than happy to do it. Although I don't foresee a problem. No, just to be sure.
Even like us, you know, funding, I guess is your next question that you have to-
Well, actually, I did have one question. I know our ordinance, but there's the new state law with the dogs off of their leashes. Is there an exemption for off-leash dog parks in statute?
Um, I don't think there is specifically. I mean, I, there is, there is a new legislation actually, which I have with me about, just about, I mean, it's all liability and parks in general, and dog parks are not included in that legislation, but we would-
Yeah, but I was, specifically the dog, there was new legislation on dogs because of the incident in the dog being off of the leash in Ridgefield, and there was a state statute put into effect about dogs who are off their leashes. I just wanted to, I guess that's my question, if there's an exemption, just so we don't get muddied in-
I'm sorry, I would specifically look at that for you. I don't have that section of the meeting, but I'm happy to look at that for you.
Okay, all right. Councilman Cavo?
Just, I think out of due respect for the Park and Rec Commission, I think we should certainly run this by the commission and ask them to at least review it in a meeting and give a recommendation. I think that would just be proper, since we do have a Park and Rec Commission, and it is gonna be a change of use to a city park, so I just, I'm throwing that out there. I just think that probably should happen. And that would require council action to do that. So, at some point, we'd have to make a recommendation-
Yes.
Let the council make a recommendation to our commission for a report-
For a look-
As long as, and as well as a planning report, or it'd probably be, you know, unless Dennis thinks it's not warranted, that's fine.
Have you thought about any neighborhood opposition?
Thought about that. Actually, gave some thought to that. The parks hours would be, you know, would close at sundown. So, it would be closed, you know, in the winter time, it would be down, it'd be down at 5 o'clock, and in the summer time, whatever sundown is, 7:30, 8 o'clock, whatever it is. So, you know, we looked at the houses that are up here, and it seemed to be fairly far enough away, and there's also a fairly good-sized ravine that runs up a bank up to their street. So, I think it should be, I don't know if it's gonna be an issue. And as far as on Highland Avenue on that side, you know, the houses are way far away from it. There's the distance of the first part of the park. These two houses, you know, were the closest to it. And then the houses over here on Sleepy Hollow are very far away from it. So, it's these homes and these two homes primarily. I don't know, I don't know, I guess we'd have to see when it goes up the flagpole, what comes back. But, you know, in something that Robin had said about, there's no cases currently in Connecticut, and back when I was doing some research for the first ad hoc, there were over 80 dog parks, 80 established dog parks in Connecticut, and they've been up and running and functioning. So, that's, I think that is a good sign. There's that many dog parks running, and there hasn't been any case history on that. That's, I think, I think it's gonna be very important to make the rules very clear. And I had hoped this past week to go and take pictures of the rules for Southbury and for Ridgefield and now in Fairfield, but I didn't have a chance to do it. But I'll hopefully have that by our next meeting.
I actually have a list of rules.
Okay.
That I've taken off of various things also. Mr. Garrick, would you like to have some input on the liability?
Sure.
Questions, please?
Sure.
(inaudible)
We ran this by, you know, by our insurance carrier, and they had some guidance on it, some information that, you know, they pulled together. And basically what they said is, there's general immunity for municipality. The biggest issue, we have to, you know, we have to enforce the rules and regulations. So, obviously, posting the rules and regulations and making sure we follow up on it and issues there. And then obviously, supervision is key, just like, you know, the playground that's next to it, supervision is key for, you know, the users of the playground next door. There's a lot of considerations that have to be planned for, and the plans that I've seen, they've taken most of those considerations, you know, in mind as they plan that. You know, Antonio mentioned the privacy slats on the fence, keep the fingers away from the dogs.
(inaudible).
I think the only other question I had was regarding the, there's a pad there. That was, is that for, you said, big tables or benches?
Just somewhere for people to sit while their dogs are running in the park.
Okay.
Now, there's gonna be, one of the rules on the sign would be no food.
Right.
You could bring food in, but if you want to have slobber all over you from 15 different dogs, you know, that's your chance. But no food is a good rule to have on the sign inside the park. And what Mr. Garrick said about the authority and some of that jurisdiction of the park, I had a lengthy discussion with Police Chief Baker last week, and Chief Baker feels that the dog warden, this would be a perfect fit for the dog warden to be overseer and be the responsible supervising party of the park. They would just make it as part of his rounds. On a daily basis, there's a dog warden on duty every day, seven days a week, and they're on call when they're not actively on duty in a police station. So, he felt that actually this would be an enhancement to their job, and that it would be good for them to be out with people, interact, look at dog licenses and such, and he thought that it was a great idea. So, he said to me, you know, he would have the full support of the police department on this for the oversight, for the authority having oversight.
Mr. Kaplantis, do you have things you'd like to add?
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
You know, based on liability risks, is there a finite number of dogs that should be in this area at a given time? I don't know. I mean, I've never been to a dog park. I'm just asking a question, but if you're worried about, you know, liabilities and so forth, I mean, there may be, you know, a cap for some, you know, number of dogs in there at a given time. Something to think about.
The park-
Is all first person.
Park right now has a gated entrance that is locked.
(inaudible)
It's locked, or unlocked, only in the summertime when the spray park is open. Based on this, I would imagine that we're gonna remove that and just leave it open all the time, which isn't an issue, but it's a change in how we do things currently. Is there enough parking in that area right now to support the additional traffic? Because it gets pretty crowded there in the summertime for the use of the playground and the spray park. So, that, I think, is something that needs to be taken into consideration as well, because we may have to add some additional parking there. Because the problem after that would be, people would be parking in the street, which is not an ideal situation based on the size, you know, the width of the road. If you're parking the road, then that narrows the bound for traffic would be an issue. So, we may want to look at that. I had a couple of other things, but that's all I could think of.
Mr. Elburne, do you know if there's any? I mean, this would be kind of your thing with the parking.
Dog parks?
No, the parking, the car parking.
Yeah, ten spaces.
Maybe we give the dogs a purple.
You know, we don't, I would say one space per dog.
For towels.
Based on whether they drive or not. If they have a butterfly, they'd get a place. I, I don't, we don't have anything. Although, if you, there's space there to expand it, you could actually double the size of that parking. So, you have plenty of spaces. But that's probably, well, (inaudible).
Oh, I'm sorry. Go up a little.
Do this one.
(inaudible)
At 9:00 to the dog park.
Councilman Knapp has a question.
Nick, what is that currently used for? The property that we're talking about?
Highland Avenue, we have a-
No, I know what the whole Highland Avenue piece with the spray park area, but that particular piece that we're gonna be taking away, is a place where kids are playing soccer or is it a place where-
It's, it's a kind of a, you know, neighborhood, kind of a, you know, called pocket park. There are people that will gather there on the weekends, have a little picnic, and, you know, go out and run around in that area. It's not, it's not an area where I will assign or permit, you know, official use for any one group to go there on a regular basis to, you know, have an organized activity. I have not done so.
So, as far as disrupting the-
It doesn't, it doesn't disrupt the normal operations for direct apartment and, you know, assignment of field space for practice or games. We don't have anything organized like that.
Councilman Chee Neece has been very patient.
No, it's okay. You know, for the chair, I think on paper, it does look like a perfect spot, but as you look, and the whole surrounding neighborhood, I think the impact that this will have on the neighborhood is gonna be, could be severe, 'cause you, you got a pocket park that just impacts the surrounding neighborhoods. Now, you're gonna open it up to the entire city, so you're gonna get vehicles who normally will never come here. So, you can have exposure, exposed risks that never were before regarding the child safety laws, regarding, I think, the design where predators, child predators can't go in this park. I guess that would apply to the dog park as well.
Well, that's currently part of this park right now.
Right, but they would have, again, this park would also be part of that, correct?
It is part of it now.
Right, so this would be part of it, would be extended to it.
All right. If you're convicted and you think you're gonna walk your dog there or go to a spray park, you can.
Right. Okay. But, but as you look at it, I think the neighbors here will have, I think we need at least ask them, a survey to them, to get their opinion to say, "Do you have an issue regarding having this park here?" You know, probably they won't, but I think we need to know that before you order fencing, before anything, or we have a public hearing to allow them at least have a say. Because that, that does have an impact, because before, this was their private park. You know, this, like, like Nick said, this is where they had picnics on weekends. Now, they gotta deal with dogs barking. On a Sunday when they're trying to have a, a party in their house, now they got dogs barking. And whether it's morning or late at night, we don't know, we don't know what the use for it, but they have to deal with that now. You know, but I think we need to at least hear from them.
And the people gathering there, it doesn't necessarily mean it's the neighborhood gathering there for a picnic. Anyone, if you wanted to have a family picnic and someone wants to call the office and, "Well, work and I do it," I might suggest to you, "Well, you can go to Highland Avenue," 'cause I know that people have done that in the past. But I'm not, I'm not gonna say that it's just the Highland Avenue people that are, you know, that utilize-
But usually a pocket park is usually for the neighborhood. It's just like Beavers, the Beavers, the Blindwood Park, you know, that's really for that area. You know, we don't expect people from the west side to go there for the park. It's usually designed for that, for the neighborhood, which is what this park was designed for. And now you're expanding it for city use. Again, parking could be an issue, traffic could be an issue, noise could be an issue with dogs barking, 'cause no one likes dogs barking at 6:00 at night when you're trying to eat dinner. I don't think anybody likes that. I think you would have to at least address that issue to the neighbors, 'cause it's not many. We're talking maybe five people, five neighbors, who may, may not have an issue with it, but I think we need to at least address it. But overall, it looks like a perfect platform just by its location itself. But I think we would have to at least reach out to them and say, "Listen, come to the next ad hoc meeting."
Councilman Don Taylor is here at 6:00.
Apologize for being late.
Councilman Nero?
Thank you. Madam Chair, just a second. Just, just a couple of questions, and one, which is okay. We all went to your area, it's not a problem. Mr. Ayadrola mentioned that we could put in privacy fence slats, which I think anything, we mentioned that we could be, we wouldn't, but I'm suggesting that we definitely do it where any, anything applies, where, where the playground is. It's, it's not obvious to me if this part- It's, it's not obvious to me if this part of the fence is also accessible for someone to say, come from here and come over to the fence, you know, but, but people also have to use some with judgment as well as approaching the fence. So, so my thought is definitely anything that approaches the playground, but then, I guess also we probably have to have some other consideration as to how well we protect this perimeter so that, or advise people that might approach this perimeter to be careful. So that, that was one thing. So definitely privacy fence there is what I'd like to suggest. Additional costs, we have a number of twenty-six thousand dollars. What other costs could we possibly foresee? Is there another five thousand in grading or, I, I don't even know what to suggest, Mr. Iadrola, but are there some other numbers that might need to be put into that?
Yeah, there, there's gonna be a little bit of cost to run the water line from the existing bathroom, bathrooms out to that entry or that control area. There'll be a little bit of cost associated with taking the parking and just expanding it. But that's a gravel lot. We have plenty of, we have plenty of material, so we really wouldn't be looking at a material cost, be basically a labor cost, and if we do it in-house, it won't cost anything at all. Other than that, I, I think that's, that's about it.
You, you, you think we'd break thirty grand or be under that?
Oh yeah, I mean somewhere, you know, I'd, I'd say you're at, you're at twenty-six, you know, you're probably anywhere another four to five thousand dollars. That would be the most.
Okay. As far as insurance costs, I guess this will probably go to Dan. Do we then, does our insurance premium go up or something because of that? Dan, I don't understand how that works.
They review it every year overall. I don't see how this is gonna have a direct impact on the overall premium.
And, and what actually happens, because we had some cases where there was like a part of it that the city had to absorb and that, of course, being the taxpayers. But I mean, is there some number that says, like a hard deductible? I don't know. Do you have a hundred?
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a hundred thousand dollar policy, I don't know. And there's a thirty thousand dollar deductible, which again, the taxpayers would have to absorb. I mean, is that how this kind of works or does, is, God forbid, something happens there, does the insurance company like to hold it for the whole thing?
No, it would fall under our general liability policy. It's a million dollar policy with ten million excess with a hundred thousand dollars deductible.
Okay. So it's possible that we could, in any event, something really went nuts, we could eat a hundred thousand dollars, the city would have to eat a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, just like any other sport.
Okay, cool. The, um, the money for doing this, the thirty grand, let's say, or go back to the thirty thousand dollars, what line item in the budget, because we just approved the budget, so money's in the budget for doing stuff, I'm assuming, such as this. Is that my correct amount or not correct?
Not, not for this plan.
Okay, all right, so, so where does the money come from?
It's my, my question. We haven't broke back yet.
Okay.
One of the things I was hoping to talk about tonight, depending on how far we got, was the possibility of doing, as Mr. Heschel suggested last meeting, of doing fundraising. We, we think that there are a lot of people that would be possibly should be taking a statement of this, because it's, it's an interest to a lot of people and we think that maybe some service community groups and some private people would step up and we're gonna talk about how we do a campaign to raise funding. We'd like, I'd love to try to do this without any taxpayer dollars. I don't know if that's gonna be entirely possible, but I'd like to minimize that as much as we can. I'm very excited about the fence price. I had fifty thousand dollars in my head as a, as a rough guess in my head, so I, when I heard twenty-six thousand, that was great. So I'm a lot closer than what I thought I was when we first came in here tonight, so. But I think that, you know, we can talk about that as we progress, where the money comes from.
Okay. The only other comment that I would like to make, and I'll, thank you. Some years ago, working at a company, we had an issue come up, and the thing that the insurance company wanted to know is, to what degree were you meeting the requirements or the legal levels? Okay. How, somebody just needs to give this some thought somehow, and, and I, somebody made the comment about the dog warden, which was really good, maybe it was you, Mr. Kal, but I, I think that was really good, because then you, then you have a sense that it's being policed and someone could come and say, something happened, were you doing this, 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 and this, and you say, no, then they're gonna say, well, you didn't meet the level of responsibility for this policy or something. So I just wanna put that out there to make sure that that's considered going forward. I don't know to who that would, to whom that would fall, that responsibility would fall, but I think it's important to keep that in mind, that people may say general things like, as long as you're policing it, as long as you're protecting it to some level. I'm not asking Robin for you to speak to this particular, unless you want to offer something in that regard.
Well, that's why I communicated with Dan, and that's why he communicated with our insurance carrier, because we wouldn't just presume to know that, and information that Dan obtained from our carriers, some general information, talked about. Supervision, as Dan mentioned, that's very important, and part of supervision is enforcement of the rules, which is why Joe spoke with the police chief about who will be looking at this, will we have any city supervision? It's important that the dog warden go there and take a look at it and, you know, I'm sure someone can be there all the time, but these are the kind of things that you do want to look at. Is the area suitable? Is it maintained? Are there rules out there? Do they notify the people when you're there at your own risk? Is the park located in a facility that minimizes the potential for any sort of attendant risks? These are all the things that everyone seems to be very carefully trying to look at and minimize to the extent as possible, but you can never minimize a way ever in a first, as much as we lower type as might like to try to, you just can't.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Nap.
Just procedurally, and we talked about the public, Mr. Chaney's talked about the public voice in opinion, procedurally, we're gonna do ordinance change anyhow in this, correct? And then here that probably have to do that.
No, once two women, sex is involved, I think we still don't get that one, once the group was involved.
Right, we need to have that. And so, yeah, and so, I mean, all this, let's assume that we all agree that this is our location, we want to follow this. Procedurally, our next step would be to get that ordinance change done, at which point in time the public would have their opportunity, a public hearing, to come out and voice their yays and nays to us at the same time. I'm just trying to think of where we're gonna be next, so. Do you, yeah, well, that was guilty, do the zoning need to do a zoning change or an amendment, any park zones?
No, but if you're gonna change the ordinance, make sure that that ordinance change is separate from this site's specific proposal. So that will fly citywide, it's not tied to this. And otherwise, you're gonna get into a debate about this project when in fact what you're, what you're doing is, is changing the ordinance that will refine throughout the city.
Favorite way of spot zoning, what we used to know.
Spot ordinance.
Really?
Jackie can't be spot zoning, Jackie can't, okay. Okay, all right, so that's, I mean, that's basically where I've been hit. The, the project looks like a beautiful spot, so. I'm done.
Mr. Ken.
Just a special to invite me through, just I wanted to answer one of Mr. Nero's questions about the privacy slats, and when Antonio and I met out there, we had talked about from the spray skate area to this corner of letting these houses. Now, there's already a chain link fence behind these houses, so we thought that if we flooded the fence right up against the existing fence, with the privacy slat to here, and then there wouldn't be a need to, because there's sort of a natural rough buffer through here, and there's even a rougher buffer through here. This is completely woods and scrub. You can't come up behind here unless you have a machete and you wanna hack your way through to there. So this area is fairly, you know, away from where people are gonna try to walk through and approach the fence, but we did, we did have the concern here, and that's why we talked about this area from the spray skate over to the corner, which is probably here where the existing fence is. So that would, that would-
You're not suggesting going away with this?
No.
Okay.
No, actually, we may do away with that and put up the new piece, make, put up the new fencing so it all matches. This is really in very rough shape, Dennis. It's, it's bent over, it's old galvanized pipe, that's, the galvanial's come off and it's rusting, and if we were gonna put all the fence-
There's existing fencing here now?
There's existing fencing from here to about here, right in here, you know, and it's fallen down in places, tree limbs have fallen down.
And you're replacing it.
So we're gonna just, since it's gonna be-
But you don't need the slats, I think.
Right, you don't need the slats anywhere, probably from this point all the way to this point. So from here to here, you wouldn't need the slats. It would just be here and here. No, that's all, that's all backed by woods. And the spray skate is completely fenced in, so there's actually a double fence, so the kids that are in the spray skate would be inside a fence, they would be inside a fence, so.
Councilman Taylor.
Apologize, I'm not totally up to speed on this, but a couple of questions, one for Antonio. Proposed waters, pickets, would those be like freeze-proof hydrants?
Yeah, freeze, yeah, exactly.
So we wouldn't have to bull the lines out at the end of the year, okay? Second question, again, I apologize, I'm not up to speed. You know, liability issues for the city, I'm sure that's been a major topic, is, is it legal for us to say, use this facility at your own risk?
I believe it is.
So we don't get, because I know dog bites are a major, you know, liability issue. And dog issues with dog fighting and everything else, and, I mean, I think it's a great idea. My, you know, my oldest son lives in Vermont, and I, I mean, you walk down, anywhere you should go in Burlington, there's dogs everywhere. And I just don't want it, I think it's great, I just don't wanna see it become a liability issue for the city, to have issue after issue after issue, your dog did this, my dog did this, somebody did this. I just wanna make sure that doesn't happen in this situation.
Well, we have checked on it, we, we've spoken to, well-
Robin, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I, I mentioned before, um-
Oh, yeah, I apologize.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay, you can, it's like, every time the city engages in an activity, you enter into a risk. There are certainly risks that you point out that are attendant with a dog park, and that's why, Don, I asked, Dan, Dan came tonight because he had spoken with our insurance carrier about this. So we have insurance, but as he mentioned, certainly if we were ever to get sued, there is a deductible that the city has to pay, which is a hundred thousand dollars in a liability case. You cannot ever legislate away every risk, but the factors that I had mentioned before to Mr. Nero are the type of things from a risk management standpoint that you look at, so-
And we can reduce our risk to a manageable point.
We try to reduce our risk, that's exactly right, that's what we try to do. We try to do all the things that the carrier mentioned, Dan, that are things that we should do, but we can never diminish a possibility that something might happen like you mentioned, yeah.
I just don't wanna see suit after suit after suit, you know, you know, nuisance type suits, kind of city time.
Yeah. Yeah, we could never prevent somebody from suing us, all we can do is try to do the things that are recommended at, at a dog park and hope that-
I mean, this is not the first dog park in America, I think, because there's been a lot of experience and there's been-
No, I, I think, um- Someone, and Joe said, I think there are eighty dog parks-
There's only any dog parks in Connecticut, there hasn't been one case law, incident of a suit.
Good. That's my main concern, is that we're now exposing the city to excess liability, excess legal time.
It's no different than somebody playing soccer in a field on or somebody swimming in a swimming pool.
Or walking on sidewalk or-
Absolutely, it's no, it's not much different than that.
The code for rules and regulations and enforcement, and they're all, you know.
Mr. Kaplanis, do you have something to say?
I just, I just wanted to ask Dan, have we had many or any suits filed in the city regarding dogs and dog bites or, you know, anywhere where we've had issues? Because right now, we have a leash law, and I know that, you know, we're constantly chasing people that have their dogs just, you know, walking alongside or running in the field where they're just standing there, not on a leash. And we ask them, you know, if I see it, I, you know, put them on leash. But, I mean, have we had instances where a dog has gone and bitten someone, and, you know, they have tried to, you know, make an issue of it with the city? I'm, I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
So, I mean, I know we're all concerned about this, but, you know, we're trying to, you know, kind of centralize a spot here where I meant, not everyone is gonna go and visit the park, but you're gonna put them in an area, I mean, I don't know if you're really increasing any more liability there than you would anywhere else in, in the city.
You're sort of concentrating the risk into one area.
Well, I mean, you're more familiar with, you know, with that, I mean-
I know you've said, Nick, that you've found people multiple times in other city parks with dogs off of leashes, and that's a high liability, because we're not taking the, probably the due process steps to prevent that from happening. It's a hit or miss thing, you're catching it occasionally, but the time you don't catch it and somebody has a dog off a leash and it bites somebody, they could sue the city because they could say, you know, the city didn't patrol this park properly and the dog was off a leash and it shouldn't have been, that you're responsible for it.
We put no dogs allowed and people are still at parks, so.
You know, one of the things too, I think that, and Robin can probably help me with this, but I, I believe most people, I know I am an insurance writer, on my policy for home, for my dog.
Home owners.
My homeowner's policy, because if my dog were to do something, I'd wanna have insurance for it, and I do have a writer for the dog, and most people know they're responsible for their dogs. And it's the same thing inside the park and outside the park, you're responsible for your animal.
Connecticut is a strict liability state. There is a statute that provides that you are liable, if your dog bites someone, you're the first avenue attack of the owner, but that's not to say that they will try to sue someone in that situation that Nick just-
You're not always, the first, first person is not always the deepest pocket.
Exactly, exactly, not everyone has insurance like Joe, you know, everyone is not responsible, and there are people out there that are not responsible, we all know that.
Well, we can't let you say that.
We try. So, so, you know, there's, there's, you know, you can have a certain comfort level, but there's no absolute certainty, I guess, since the buzzer went.
Good.
Councilman Chaney.
To the chair, just a follow-up on what Councilman Nap was, was alluding to before, as process. So the next step that the committee will be taking at some point either tonight is to approve the location. Once the location is approved, then the committee will be working on establishing the ordinance, or we'll have to go back to the council to approve the location first and then establish the ordinance. Or you do it as one big committee and then one big package.
It was my thought that we would, I was actually scribbling my notes here, that we would move to change, have the section twelve, twelve-three changed to accommodate the dog parks. Once that's done, this end, our committee reconvened for the purpose of moving forward on this specific site. Is that procedurally the way we should go, or?
Because I was reading the article here that-
The, 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 before the orders.
And they had all the rules, so, and that's-
I think we need to prepare, we're running a bunch of-
And then we get, and then-
Well, I haven't gotten there, yes, well, that was my next.
Well, yeah, that's still a rich way of talking about.
No harms being done by changing the city ordinance. The, the dog park never appears, the dog park never appears, so I'm thinking that we could get the, the city ordinance changed to accommodate the dog parks. In the meantime, we, we can work on all the other particulars we've been talking about, where the money's coming from, finger fences and all that stuff, so that, so that when we do meet again, at least we'll know, okay, now we can present this to the council for approval.
Again, the follow-up, so the next step will be is to move forward to change the ordinance, for the council to work on, public hearings and all that, while the committee reconvenes for the nuts and bolts of the actual, currently, yeah, you do have the same.
I think the committee would still work with the ordinance before we-
Well, the ordinance has to come out of the committee.
That you go for the ordinance to, so a dog park will never be established and there's no funding for it, and I don't think you necessarily will have it, unless you think it might happen sometime in the future. I mean, there's always the possibility that it could happen in the future, right.
Just because this one fails, there's gonna be another one.
Do you have to have a public hearing?
Yes.
And an ordinance change, yes.
And an ordinance change as well?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so you can't, uh, do both and say, we're, you know, we're recommending along with the ordinance that how they have a new park is the site, proposed site for this dog park, so that you get the neighborhood involved on that part of the public hearings as well? Or does it have to be in a separate, you know, separate thing?
I mean, we could look at that, we could draft, I mean, we have to look at that, it's gonna take a little while to draft that, we could, perhaps one way to do it, to structure it, is to allow dog parks and, um, well, you'd be, you'd be hampering yourself though if you just put Highland Avenue in, because that- because then every time you expanded it, uh, area, you'd have to go back and amend the ordinance. I don't think that would be a very efficient way to do it, I don't think that would be very efficient.
I, I think you need to.
Just in general, yeah, I do too.
So I just wanna keep following up, because I know the article here had a whole bunch of rules. So would the ordinance incorporate the rules of the park itself, the operation, the hours, the noise and all that itself, or would that be the Parks Department who would, who would regulate that?
You know, I.
That's always a question.
I'm not sure that, you know, that we'd have to roll out.
If I'm saying.
I think when we start drafting, I, it's possible then that I don't, you know, I don't conceive of how it's gonna actually look right now without, without looking a little bit more into it. I have seen and seen the ordinance, I have some that does have rules in it, but I, you know, we would have to consider if that's, I haven't, I don't know. If, if that's the way we wanna go. Um, I, I think sometimes generally it's better, but we will look at that as we draft it and we'll look at that as.
And I'm, I'm just thinking, just to myself now, would the, would the rules come from the police department, since they're gonna be the enforcer of the rules? Would it, would it come by order of the Denver Police Department? Would that?
We, I would probably be from the Parks Department, I mean, we could certainly, they could work together or pitch it with the Canine Control Officer, see if there are any specific recommendations. I think those details will, will work themselves out as we go through the process.
I'm kinda thinking for a second, because I, I haven't really had a chance to vet my questions yet. Well, I'm just thinking that the next meeting should also include, like, what the rules should be in conjunction with everybody, that's, we really need that written down in stone, what, you know, what we need on that sign, and what exactly we need posted to be as covered as possible. And then I think we also need to look into who our community partners could be. Um, whether we could get Dawes involved, or get donations for the bags, or, you know, so I think, uh, that's another thing we need to kind of look into for the next meeting.
That's the easy part, I'm sure.
Yeah, but I think you, you could get lost in the little details that we need to also be addressing, and that could build up. So I think it's important that we kind of get everything all tied up, um, as we're moving forward. Councilman Tapper.
Again, I apologize for maybe not being up to speed on this, but I'm just, you know, looking at this article that came from Mr. Chaney, and, and we're looking at, you know, back to, uh, you know, vaccinations, leash, no food, no smoking, no aggressive dogs, no barking, no dogs in season, no dogs under four months, four months, no running by children, no children under five age, clean up the pest waste. Will, will there be somebody there enforcing this?
Not on a regular basis.
Well, not constantly, but, but the.
I mean, you can make, you can make every single rule in the world that you want.
The dog warden will be stopping by, Joe did speak to the chief of police.
Again, I'm sorry, I.
It's okay, and then, this is, this is like any other park in the city, there's not always supervision. The people who, who come to these parks, they're self-supervised. If there's an issue, the police can be called and the police will act on the issue. But the rules, I think, are more being posted as our due diligence to say, look, these are our rules. If you didn't follow these.
It's your responsibility.
It's your responsibility.
That's fine, that's, I'm the boss, that's fine, thank you.
You can't possibly put everything down.
No, a person in every park.
Well, or even the rules, I mean, I can tell you for spray parks, I mean, we have a list of things, you know, that you're not supposed to do, you know, you can't bring this or that in. They may say, you can't bring your bike in, and somebody comes in with one of those scooters, well, it doesn't say anything about a scooter on it. Well, it's like, yeah, you're right, but you can't bring it in.
Yeah.
I mean, common sense does have to apply once in a while, but you're not gonna cover everything.
If we could, let's just like, common sense responsibility.
You'd have a, you'd have a board of rules that has a law.
Mr. Nero, did you have a question?
I was just gonna write it down, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm trying to understand, given that everything falls into place with amending the ordinance, um, what would be the next, what's the progression for the next things they have to drop? Should it be amending the ordinance and then it goes to the coun, does the council, do we move this to the council to amend the ordinance, and then it goes to a public hearing, and then it goes to a committee, the whole, I don't understand what the next steps are.
Yes.
Did someone just go through that?
You just did.
I did? You did, right out, right out of the money, to this week, that, okay, yesterday and today. By a lot of, by a lot of, we take it on your way home.
Okay, we gotta get through this because I did wanna hold up Jack's meeting, but I won't. Okay, I do understand the, and I'm actually a little confused, I understand about the ordinance and what that process is, but now, when the committee meets again, do they meet to, to look at the amended ordinance and work on all this other, all the other things also? Like, how do we, how do we progress with the two things?
The question is, does the committee feel that you still need to be, or to cover some of these other items that we've mentioned, um, man chairman, such as, um, the rules? Does the committee, you know, that when it goes back to the council, and when people actually feel that that's the case, that you could convene again, and you could discuss rules? Do you feel that if that's the level of deep that you wanna get into, if you have information, we can help you with your rules for many towns, um, or, we could help you with that, um, if you wanna report, when you go back to the council, if you wanna report that you want community parties, that you, uh, gather that, that they can manage. Do you mean, if you feel that you wanna have all these things lined up, you can go back to the council, and you can go back to the council, your conference, you know, you recommend that.
Including the ordinance process.
Yeah, including the ordinance, you recommend that, the recommendation of this city and the dog park be approved, you know, on, you know, you have a large, um, partner, community member, and we also recommend that you, um, lose the parts that have been ordered, and, um, you know, you can go back with it at that time as well. And then the whole council would vote on it, so I would say it depends on a little detail you want, and you want to look into, and I think that's your inclination, to look into more of the rules, and I would recommend that, maybe, or we have more, um, for the rules. In the meantime, we can let that start, first of all, the ordinance rules.
Okay.
I, I, I agree, I think that the next meeting, we should talk about rules. I think that there could be possibly, if it's needed, a proposed ordinance change draft presented to the committee, I think, and then financing. I think those are the three big keys, and I think if those three meet, can be everybody's acceptance, then I think this parcel probably will as well, to make a full recommendation to the council that we proceed with the dog park on this parcel of Highland Avenue. We will get the money, as the money's acquired, this will hap, this can happen, and then take it to the council that way, so.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
We need to wait it here and then write it down, but I move that we, uh, reconvene at a later date with the specific intent of reviewing the ordinance change, have a draft to review the ordinance change, review the finance of the project, and review the rules.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, second, any, any, not in the motion? Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to the chair? All in favor? Antonio, thank you for all your work and coming.